Okay, with the hour being after seven, I have a call. Open the meeting, first item of business, March sixteenth minutes. Make a motion to approve. Need a second for questions?
Second.
All right, any questions, comments? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
April sixth, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second for questions or comments, are there ready? No, okay. Alls in favor?
Aye.
So now we sit. Twenty minutes. I'll go watch the clock for the next twenty minutes.
We can do twenty-one. This is why we should start all of our hearings at 7:00 P.M.
That's right.
No, because I've run into it before. We've had stuff go on, Liz, and it gets backed up. This is a very unusual one. We've had in the past where the hearing's ready there, the people are there, and everybody at 10:30 is gone, and we haven't even accomplished our end of the agenda, so...
That doesn't sound like a very efficient meeting.
What doesn't?
If somebody starts their presentation at seven and you're still sitting there at 10:00 P.M., backed up.
Not just them, there were many presentations. The problem you have is people are out there ready to go, and you haven't got through your stuff, and it gets backed up, and at 10:30, when you still have stuff on the agenda, it never got done.
I know.
Well, do you want to take care of these...
Sounds like somebody would need to move the meeting along a little quicker if that was the case.
You want to take care of these requests for comments?
One's for seats today.
Ten minutes.
Well, CBAM durance is in front of us. What do we care about a telephone pole? Right? A hundred Elsie. I mean...
I have an extra one.
You don't really say anything critical. You always just summarize.
I think you criticize in certain situations. I didn't think that this was a good one to be.
Do you want to come off camera and take a break? Interesting.
Yeah.
It's like anybody's got a...
Oh, Jack, do you want to go off camera?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
So, motion to take a break. Take a break. Seven twenty-five. So you like your time out. Okay, back again, with the hour being seven twenty-five, we have a first senior center, case number seventeen dash oh-three fifty South Street. If you want to come up, and before I start, ask the gentleman, are you here for Burns Ave?
Are they ready?
Are you here for Burns Ave?
No, I'm here, Bruce.
Okay, just want to make sure, because you're the... All right, because that's not going tonight, just... Okay. I read the public hearing notice. Notice is given by the planning board to hold a public hearing in the main meeting room, April twentieth at seven twenty-five. Our site plan request application from the town of Walpole. Request a site plan under section thirteen of zoning bylaws. Construct a municipal building senior center related site improvements. Said property is shown on census map thirty-three, parcel one-twenty-seven, zoning district limited manufacturing, and shown on a site plan prepared by Places Associates Planning, Landscape and Architecture, Great Neck Road, Littleton, Mass., and by Caitlin Petrovic Architects of Keene, New Hampshire. With that being said, the meeting's open, and... Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, my name's William Murray from Places Associates. With me tonight are Brian Jarvis, who's the project OPM, the works for the town, Caitlin, who is the project architect, and of course, the assistant town manager. If I may, I just have a couple of updated drawings that I printed out for you.
Updated as of when?
Not too long ago.
So this packet we have now is...
No, I'll distract with you if you'd like. So, the updated drawings are, there are two, there's a set of landscape plans, and there is a survey plan. The survey plan reflects the condition that you saw the site about a week ago before they started the construction of the police station. So it's got a little dark wandering cloud around it, and that's effectively the completion of the remediation. So that's what the Norfolk engineering plan is. It's the revised existing conditions plan that we presented to the contractor not too long ago. The other two plans are landscape plans, and they're a very minor revision. He's accommodated the downhill slope on the new plans. He's also accommodated the requirements of the LSP. And I'll get into what the requirements of the LSP are, if you don't mind, in just a little bit, in my, what I hope to keep fairly short. So once again, my company is the civil engineer. We're also the civil engineer for the police station project, which initiated construction at the beginning of this month. The project that we're presenting to you is the proposed senior center. It's a twelve thousand nine hundred square foot building. It's two stories. It's about seventy-nine hundred square feet on the first floor, and forty-some, four thousand some odd square feet on the second floor. And of course, the project architect can describe it in much greater detail than I can. Just to bring the board, or bring you back to where the site is, we're on the northerly side of the Napontet River. The proposed senior center will be built on the remaining land that isn't occupied by the police station site. To the east of the site is the old railroad right-of-way, which the town actually still, or the town owns. To the west is South Street. There are the only abutting residential, immediately abutting residential properties are immediately to the south on the other side of the river, where the town actually owns land, but we're not doing anything. The placement of this building on the site was subject to quite a bit of study by the architect, the council on aging, and the building committee. We looked at putting the building to the front of the site in various places throughout the site, but it just didn't work, mainly because the front of the site is constrained by the river, the offsets to the river, and it squishes it in, and the building didn't really have... It was too prominent to the street, and it didn't really work for a circulatory pattern around the building. So we've moved it, the architect has moved it to the rear of the site for a variety of reasons. And I'll let John Catlin, the architect, address that in much greater detail. He's much better at the particulars. But suffice it to say that the design of a senior center is not like the design of any other building. There's a whole lot of criteria that applies to a senior center that doesn't normally apply to any other retail or professional office space. As we get older, our site, eyesight doesn't work as well. Our reflexes are a little slower. Perception and reaction time isn't as good, and those things have to be accommodated in the site design, which is what we've done. So the site also is serving another, meeting another need. The remediation created a pretty big crater, which is what's out there right now on that portion of the site. So building the buildings that were there, they pulled out an awful lot of material. The police station site will generate excess material. And as the licensed site professional describes it, it's very lightly contaminated material, which means we don't want it to leave the site. It meets criteria for the DEP, but if it leaves the site, it becomes manifested hazardous waste, and it's a very, very expensive proposition. So excess material from the construction of the police station will fill the hole, substantially fill the hole on the senior center site in preparation for the construction of the senior center. In addition, the drainage system and the sewer system all tie down by the Napontet River, and they're going to leave stubs in place for the senior center simply to connect right to. So that was built into the planning process for the police station and incorporated into the design for the senior center. So if I may, I'm just going to give you a walkthrough of the circulation pattern that's proposed for the senior center. Can I leave that there? Do I need to pull that with me?
Yeah.
So one of the most important parts of the circulation of the senior center is the entrance off of South Street, the southerly entrance. This is an entrance only. It's designed that you will only enter here, you will not exit the site here. And that's for a couple of very, very pragmatic reasons. Number one, the bridge abutment over here prevents you, if you were trying to exit here, you don't have very good site distance because of the bridge abutment. But if all you're doing is turning in, you have plenty of site distance to see an oncoming car. Then the circulation pattern takes you this way around the site, so it's only got one direction, so it's very apparent for the seniors in what direction that they're leaving. And this is the only way out of the site, through the two-way driveway that's designed for the police station. It's designed to a subdivision standard. We've got specialized areas up here for loading and unloading. We've got a large area here. We're anticipating that the senior vans, which are parked up back right now, they're slightly larger than most cars, and the parking spaces over here are larger than the parking spaces in the general parking lot. In addition, this is where Meals on Wheels arrives to the site up to two times a day. So it's going to be a moderately active portion of the site with people coming in and going out. And we wanted to segregate that use from the general population. Accessible parking is down in their own little assigned parking space, and they can get into the building in multiple means. All of the sidewalks, all of the parking lot meet the accessibility codes. There is a walk that comes all the way down and connects to South Street, which connects to the crosswalk that will be put in for the parking lot that's currently under construction across the street. There are fifty-two parking spaces proposed for the senior center. To go very quickly to some of the landscape criteria, the abutters are on the other side of the right-of-way to the east. The abutters on the other side of the river, where there's existing green space. Across the street is the contaminated material and building and parking lot. There aren't a residential abutters. And the abutters are to the north of the police station, and the screening and buffering has already been accommodated as part of that project. There's going to be a large patio off of the main function room, which expands program space. It's on the southerly side of the building. The patios are made of very specific material, and we've accommodated that with screening and planting such that the slope, which is a fairly substantial slope that goes down to the floodplain into the river, that's going to be stabilized, which is one of the very few changes that the landscape architect made to his drawings. We have a biodegradable roach control fabric over there, and we're going to put what's known as mass slope mix, which is a deep-rooted plant-seed mix that is not intended to be cut. So it just becomes naturalized, it creates habitat for critters, and will stabilize the slope in a pretty short amount of time. The other change to the plan is the landscape architect actually endorsed the plans. So that was really the only changes to the landscape plan that I'm aware of. We did work with the fire department on the turning radius on this. In your package is our turning radius. We have a program that's called Auto Turn. The fire department's buying a new ladder truck. I don't know if they've gotten it or not. But the turning radius that we used is the manufacturer's information on the brand-new ladder truck, which has a very big turning radius. So the fire truck can enter off of South Street. It can maneuver here and make its way out of the project. The deputy fire chief wanted the fire truck to use the outer lane, not the inner lane, because that's what they'll be responding to if they ever have to use the ladder truck. This design also accommodates if they, if the senior center is holding a program and they have a bus, the bus can park here, and it won't be blocking anybody. You will always be able to get by and maneuver around the site. The number of parking spaces complies with zoning specifically because zoning requires, this is a unique use, it's not a listed use. So as we say in our narrative, that an adequate number of spaces to accommodate under all normal conditions, cars, documents, visitors, and employees at the discretion of the building inspector or the planning board. So fifty-two is the number of spaces on the site, including the four accessible spaces. We don't take credit for the seventy-two spaces across the street, but they are accessible, and we've made them so by connecting to it. We are showing a site lighting plan, which is, the site is principally going to be lit by LED full cutoff post lights, and that's also in your package, with an uplight for the flagpole. And we met with the conservation commission last Wednesday night, and they closed their public hearing. And I'm hoping that you have information with regard to that. And then finally, we met with the town engineer Tuesday of this week. It was kind of hard to coordinate meeting with her. And we have received her letter, and we went over point by point with her on Tuesday, and we don't find anything in her letter that isn't readily achievable or hasn't already been accommodated. We haven't changed the site plan to accommodate her comments and some other comments and review that we've received internally. But there's nothing on her letter that is a red flag, as I would call it. Most of it's pretty achievable reference to a note or a standard. We did, as part of the conservation commission meeting, address the drainage-specific comments. And as I understand, Maggie Walker signed off on our drainage-specific comments, which allowed the conservation commission to close the hearing. If you have, I went as fast as I could. If you have any questions, of course, the project architect is here, and he can explain the appearance of the building, the functions that go on interior to the building, any of the architectural or program components. I can address, hopefully, any of your site-related concerns or permit.
All right. I'll read the comments from the other departments and boards. From fire department, dated March twenty-third, the architect provided documentation depicting the turning radius for a fire truck. It appears the width of the path of travel curb-to-curb requires one hundred percent snow removal at the curbs. Curbs should also be designed for minimum tire damage. For someone who can drive.
Right, so that is principally facilities management?
Yeah, together.
Yeah.
As stated previous, the fire department is concerned with the proposed landscaping plants, especially scarlet oak trees overhanging the lane of travel. The engineer documents a path of travel fiber apparatus from curb to curb adjacent to the drop-off area. Tree branches in the roadway will impede the apparatus. We request a narrow planting alternative.
We can pick a different shrub tree or plant.
I think we actually did change that. All right, the building, Kaias sprinkler, and the phi hydro on C-two shall be relocated to the east of the island. Are you familiar with that?
I'm sorry, can you say it again? The fire...
I'm sorry, the hydrant, they wanted to move on page C-two. They wanted it to be relocated to the other side, the east side of the island.
Sure. We will coordinate that.
That's police. What you expect, they don't have any public safety concerns related to traffic on this. I would hope not. So there'll be neighbors. As I go through, sewer and water, April nineteenth. Voter water sewer, voter concur with comments of the town engineer. From conservation, the conservation, dated April nineteenth. Conservation voter closed the public hearing, issued an order conditions for the senior center. The order conditions was voted based upon receiving a revised plan showing the roof drain, piping, and splash pad, and a fence located at the top of the slope to the wetlands as discussed. You guys do that for, is that done yet, or...
The, we have not. The landscape plan does show the fencing that they requested. So they, they wanted fencing between the lawn area and that patio, that squiggly patio on the southerly side. And we agreed that was a good idea.
Liz, or do you want to do Maggie's first?
Um, do you want to go through all Maggie's? Because I think she was...
There's really only one thing that Maggie asked for that we can't do.
No, I, what I got here, just so you understand, is a March twenty-ninth letter.
Right.
And it's one. We got three sewer comments, one, two, three, five water comments, nine drain comments, and thirteen general comments, so it's quite the...
Yeah, and there's just one that, as I said, we met with her and went over some of these. A lot of these are, I suggest you look at or refer to the standard of, and that's fine. And we addressed the drainage comments pretty readily. I think she misread the plan. She wants us to tie to the twelve-inch water line in South Street. There is a twelve-inch water line in South Street, but it's on the other side of the river. So there's a six-inch line in front of the senior center that the police station is connecting to. When it crosses the bridge, that's when it becomes a twelve-inch line. So there isn't, there isn't, right behind, on the existing conditions plan, it says twelve-inch, but it's drained. So we've coordinated that with the water department already. That's the only one that I can't accommodate.
All right, just the ones I'll look through quickly here. She's looking, first one for sewer, she's looking for a detail for the drop sewer.
Yeah, the drop manhole is being installed as part of the police station. So the stubs, the senior center will connect to a stub, so we don't need to provide the drop manhole.
Okay, so she talked about bedding?
We discussed that with her, good comment.
Okay. She wanted that on the sheet, and she goes in about if the gasket's old and crumbly.
Yeah, and again, we're tying to a brand-new sewer manhole installed by the police station and a stub, we're not tying to the old crumbling manhole.
Okay. Pipe types, domestic fire service and domestic?
Look, we showed them on a different sheet, we'll show them on C-two.
Oh, so they're already on the sheet?
They're, they're on the utility plan, yeah.
Okay. Six inches, you talked about the twelve-inch thing.
Right.
Superintendent. That's up to you and the guys in the sewer and water. Meter pit, same thing, sewer and water. Hydrant location is what they, you just talked about. You're going to, she wants you to confirm the post, pre and post runoffs?
Uh, we already accommodated that with her.
Tuesday?
Yeah, with, as part of the conservation commission. Do you want me to tell you on the drainage ones which ones we got?
Yeah, I don't quite understa, so she wanted one for the whole thing, but then she wanted one just for the senior center?
Right. We resolved one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine under drainage. I have a copy of the letter that we sent to the conservation commission. The board would like to see it. And, and not putting words in anybody's mouth, the conservation administrator sat down with the town engineer, who confirmed her acceptance of the contents of our letter.
I do have a question, number four, the drains. Talks about stormwater treatment unit using a Vortentry? Vorts?
Vortentry.
It's not the old vortex, is it?
No. And it's the same unit that we're using on the police station, exactly the same.
Okay, there was something about whether they could even maintain it, right?
She had that comment during the police station conversation, and we resolved that.
Same as police. Stormwater report, the Vort, yeah, consideration type of maintenance. But I think we put those in all over the town anyway, right?
Yeah, you, the town has a vacuum cleaner, and that's what you need.
Piping of the roof drains?
That's one that the conservation commission wanted to see, and Maggie wanted to see. We have not yet revised the plan for that, but it's very pragmatic.
What are they doing now? Where are they going, just on the splash block?
The architect has rain leaders. We don't connect the drainage system to them, but we're going to.
The rain leaders currently go down the foundation.
Okay. All right, just checking, I don't know what, why I have to tie this down.
They'll go down to a foundation closed drain that will come out.
Trenches for gas and water too close to each other? I don't know. Are they?
We always run into this comment. When they get in proximity to the building, the building could take precedence over the standard civil site construction. And actually, that's under final coordination with the architect and the other trades.
She talks about site distances, but I think you clarified that, that you're only coming in from...
Correct.
South Street. Driveway. Signs for that. Oh, any place we have a ramp, we need a tactile warning pad, truncated domes.
This is one of, it's my pet peeve. I like to show a piece of information in one location so that I don't, you don't make a mistake by showing it in one location and not showing it in another, and not showing it in another. We show it on the construction detail. And we refer to it in a very lengthy note on our grading plan that all the construction has to meet ADA.
Yep.
Maggie wants me to show it everywhere on the site plan, and I will do that. But I don't believe that that's a proper and prudent thing. You show it in one location, and then if something gets changed, you don't ever miss it. It's on the construction detail. But we will be changing the plan to accommodate it.
No, it's, we have subdivision with none of this there, and someone didn't know what they were, so...
Well, there's a, seventeen on the grading plan, it's about that big.
Yeah, no, I understand those.
But as I said, you know, a lot of her comments were pragmatic, and I, we take no exception.
Some of these, you know, I guess my issue would be, not for you guys, if the line striping, you shouldn't have to contact the highway supervisor details. We should have standard details in this town that we don't have. You don't have to go play fish, how big are your parking spaces, or how big are your lines? It should be on the standard details.
We will amend our details to say...
No, it doesn't do with you, but I'm saying this, you should be able to rip out a sheet from Walpole. You don't have to go find out what the color blue for the...
We will do as she's requesting.
Oh, by the way, we do have a special color for hydrants, don't we?
I believe so.
You better find that out, because if not, you guys will be hung in effigy.
I would like to comment a little bit on the lining for these parking spaces. For senior centers, we double-line it so that it's a little bit clearer about where you place your car. Without the double-line, we often have seniors parking a little askew. So we actually provide a double...
Double line?
Double line.
All right, that's all her comments, Liz.
I'll just summarize these. I would note that the site plan is designed in accordance with the provisions of section thirteen, subsections nine A, one through nine of the zoning bylaw, and that the proposal is consistent with the character of the surrounding area and the goals outlined in the town's master plan. As far as parking and traffic, as the applicant's engineer already stated during the presentation, they do provide for adequate parking directly on-site. So the off-site parking area that was referenced in the application is simply above and beyond to provide additional parking. But they do meet all the requirements in that regard. I also think that overall, this site will be of huge benefit to the people not only frequenting the new senior center, but people who currently frequent the town hall. There's a high demand for spaces out there sometimes, as it exists now. And I think that the new building and the layout with the one-way in and the way that they've designed that will really be helpful in that regard. The site distances at the driveway location meet the criteria necessary. As far as the landscape and drainage plan, they've made some small modifications, and they're in the process of making others. and they're in the process of making others, um, to have everything conform to the conservation commission approval. It appears that everything was designed in accordance with the Mass D E P Stormwater Management Standards. They did provide us with a comprehensive landscape plan, um, and a very detailed planting plan for the site. As far as landscaping goes, I would just take note of the fire department's comment, and the board may want to consider imposing a special condition that the scarlet oak plantings identified in their letter will not be used, um, near that particular driveway, and that they'll select something else. Other than that, it looks like everything that's, um, taken into consideration for the site as far as plantings, um, that they take into consideration, the heat and sunlight exposure, and that they've selected, um, plantings that are relatively low maintenance, which is good. They do provide a detailed photometric plan in the plan set, and they note that the parking lot lighting will be LED and sort of standard that all the illumination will be directed toward the interior of the site away from abutting properties. And otherwise, I would just note that the site, um, obviously would be, um, managed and under the direction of an LSP, um, so it even kind of in some regards takes the local level, like conservation officials and everything out of it. So they'll have everything in order in that regard, too. I don't know if you want, I do have some suggested, um, special conditions that the board was inclined to approve tonight, but do, I can wait on those if you want.
Yeah, will we wait so that, uh, you want to hear about the building, right? Okay, building time, John.
It's a very beautiful building.
That's it?
The building is, um, is two stories. It's compact, often constrained by parking requirements and the size of the site. A couple things about it, um, almost all of our program spaces are oriented to the south and to the west on the building, uh, with administrative and, uh, non-program spaces, other than the arts and crafts room, um, focused on the north and east side of the building. It has a drop-off as, as, it comes off. It has a drop-off, as Bill noted, where people are able to stop, and it takes a while for some elders to exit a car, and that drop-off is out of the lane of traffic, so that it will not hold up people on the site. It also on the site, it recirculates on-site, so nobody has to leave the site after dropping somebody off to go park a car, or leave the site to come pick somebody up at the entrance. We recirculate on-site in a one-way direction. The one-way direction, one way in, one way around the site, and out through the, uh, shared, um, drive by the police station, is designed really because as we get older, driving issues are an important aspect, and making it simple and clear as to where you're going is, is a big part of it. There will be signage associated with that. The, um, patio area that Bill referenced, that's out to the south of the, um, site, south kind of west site of the site, uh, overlaps a little bit into the, uh, property that's owned by the town, that's the railroad access area, and that is allowing for a future, uh, walking trail for elders. Walking is a big part of exercise for, uh, us older folks. The building itself has a main entrance that comes in and has direct access both to the control point of the administrative area, uh, for people checking in as they come in, and also for, um, accessing the large multipurpose room where most of the activities occur. That'll be helpful. Thanks. You think I might not be able to remember what it looks like, but I, I do. The building exterior is, um, is a maintenance-free material. We've gone over this a bit with DPW, too. It's, it's a cementaceous, uh, similar to hardy panel or hardy, um, plank, um, which is a, which is a, uh, an item that really doesn't require any maintenance over time. All the trim will be, um, uh, of low maintenance also. The roof is asphalt, it's gabled, it has a lot of kind of character to it. When you enter the building into the, uh, reception area in the multipurpose room, you also have direct open access to a, what we call a monumental stair to the second level, and a small cafe, library, lounge area, which accesses directly out to the patio as well as the multipurpose room. One of the unique design elements here in the multipurpose room is we have a platform. We don't call it a stage for code reasons. It's 18 inches high. It's a performance area where, where lectures or, or music can be done, uh, choral sings. It's accessible with a lift, and that platform has a folding glass door that folds out of the way, out onto an exterior performance area that could be used in the summer for outdoor events, uh, overlooking the rail trail. Once you're in the building, uh, the monumental stair takes you upstairs, and it goes, and the elevator is immediately accessible next to it, and that takes you up to, to the second level. Mainly before I get upstairs, I'll mention that we have a full commercial kitchen, which is on this side of the building, and as Bill noted earlier, that service area is out of the way of the main entrance to help keep it simple, uh, and less cluttered for, uh, the people who are using the center. When you go upstairs, you arrive up on the upper level to an open area that's a game and card room. There's, uh, three, uh, three activity spaces that are either arts and crafts, uh, lecture spaces, or other use groups for, um, for meetings and gatherings. The large, open, uh, game room upstairs at the top of the stairs has two billiard tables and tables and chairs for cards, puzzles, and games. And then directly down, uh, opposite of the multi, of the main stair coming up is a fitness area, which is somewhat unique because the, the multipurpose room is multi-story, two, two levels high, and that fitness area has a full glass wall looking down into that. It kind of ties together the activity between what's going on in the multipurpose room and what's happening upstairs. It adds a synergy to the space. All of the activity spaces upstairs are very transparent, they have glass walls to allow people to see activities that are occurring within them. There's full bathrooms throughout. There's one handicap, um, bathroom on the second floor, we call that a companion toilet. A one on the second floor happens to have a handicap shower available in it, and the, um, the companion toilet on the first floor, uh, is a, is a toilet that's separate from the game toilets where, which accommodate the majority of the, uh, user groups. That's kind of it in a nutshell. The library has bookcases, it has a double-sided gas fireplace, uh, which allows people to benefit from that in the wintertime on both sides. The cafe has small, um, tables that accommodate two or three chairs, uh, and seating area. It also has a counter that is similar to what we might call a, um, an internet counter, where you can, um, place your computers or your, your iPad and, uh, address the internet. The whole building will be on Wi-Fi. I can't wait to get in there and use it. Certainly, your comments are, are appreciated. The patio, I will mention, is going to be a recycled rubber brick rather than real bricks, and they're engraveable, and the seniors are hoping to be able to raise money through sale of, uh, memorials or, or honorariums on the bricks.
Okay. Thank you, John. Before I open up, sitting on the building committee, there's a few unique things that I learned here that anybody listening on TV, too, is, some people say, why isn't it one floor? And as you explained, is, if it's long, it's like a ranch house. You don't want to be walking 100 feet to get there where it's a little closer, so you pay a little more for the elevator, but everything's more usable space.
It trudges the hallway.
Yes. The other thing I didn't realize, too, is in, in the truncated domes we talked about earlier, I always wondered why they were different colors, because you explained to me, if you're blind, you want to be able to feel it with the cane, until you told me that when you get older, you need to see the difference in colors.
Contrast movement.
Yeah, I always, yeah, my own business, I, I said, why do we need colors if it's for a person who's blind with their stick, they're not going to see it, until you talked about the colors.
It's called wavefinding. I, I did mention, and I will mention now, that much of the center is lit, lit with, um, natural light through, uh, a particular skylight that we specified for this job called a solar tube, and in the multipurpose room, and throughout the interior hallways during the daytime, even on a cloudy day, you probably do not have to run any, uh, artificial light.
Two other things. One was the wainscoting. I know you got it on odd drawings here, but it's made to be wide enough, so if you're walking down, you can grab it. And the, actually, when you guys explained the circulation, one of the things come out, so you come in, drop around, but I don't think it was pointed out, and I think it's very key, is they can't make that right turn back, because we got the little piece of island sticking out, no, down below. See that?
Yeah.
So you, yeah. It's kind of like going out of a Dunkin' Donuts, it leads you to the only way you can go. If you want to go over the curb, you're going to go over the curb, but for the most part, that's why you can never come back out there. So those were some of the things.
We can add a drive-through here, too.
Yeah. So that's some of the reasons why it was kind of done the way it was. There's a lot of unique stuff when you deal with, like, they started out, it's different for a senior center, so those are some of the things that I kind of learned there, but...
I'm impressed, Jack, that you were listening to all of it.
I listened. Doesn't mean I liked everything, but I listened.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Anybody from the audience, before I open up to the board? Any questions, comments? Okay, John?
This is a building that's long overdue, and, um, give you great credit, it's a great building. I, I didn't see the elevation tonight, the structure itself. It's, I noticed that the...
They're in the back.
Last page.
In the last page of the... Yeah, I like the lighting plan, flagpole, those are nice features, and, um, I think the 52 spaces is more than adequate. You have 7,960 square feet on the first floor, uh, so you have an elevator to get from one to two, which is good, and you have a stairway as well.
Yeah, monumental stair. Two up, actually, by code.
The outside of the building itself is, you say, is finished with hardy plank or cement board, something like that?
Yes, clappered and shinkles.
And what about the trim itself? Is that, is that ZAZ, I can't pronounce it.
We originally called for AZAT, but in discussions with EPW, I can't remember, uh, facilities, um, we have suggested a, something called Borel. It's a, it's made from fly ash. It's, it's a very stable product that holds its paint so once it's...
It's similar to...
Very similar to hardy.
Yeah, hardy, yeah. Yeah, I, I think this is a great project, and of course, I see a couple of my senior members at the board here will probably use this down the road.
Hopefully, right now.
Hopefully, yeah. I'm, I'm, of course, I'm a junior yet, but thank you. That's it, Jack.
All right, go ahead, he's talking to you, Mark. He was talking about old people.
Yeah. Joe Maraski and Mr. Phil.
Get older every day. The only questions I have is, I like the project, the town needs, needs the building, the facility, obviously, uh, but it seems like when we built the library, and it was very successful, and they achieved a LEED certification, I think of gold, and just for the record, so it's on the record, were you ever asked to make an attempt at this building being a LEED-certified building?
I, I will comment on that, that all of our buildings are certifiable LEED just because of Mass Stretch Code. This particular building, it's on a, on a, a repurposed site that was a brownfield. That gives you enough points probably right there that it'd be LEED-certified, but this is also, has exceptional insulation. The exterior, uh, vertical walls are, are, are R40. The stretch code asks for, I think, for R20, I think, for the exterior, those. Our ceiling is about R50, so we're using a closed cell foam system, and the interior lighting, being primarily natural light, also adds a considerable value to the LEED certification. If we were to spend the $40,000 for that opportunity...
Right.
...we would easily achieve gold on this one. I can run the numbers if you'd like.
Well, no, you don't need to run the numbers.
It, it is, it's an exceptionally good building for LEED certification.
One, the, the only thing that, that I looked at, that I kind of looked, you know, sideways at, but again, you've explained it very well, was, in a, at least the buildings I've seen recently, there's a whole lot of glass being used to take advantage of, of natural light, um, and in certain ways, certain seasons reflecting light, certain seasons absorbing light to, to achieve what you want to achieve, uh, for climate control and, and whatnot, and I didn't see a lot of glass in this building, so that's why I wanted to ask the question, but, you know...
Actually, we have quite a bit of glass, it just isn't quite so obvious, but the glass that faces south and west all have, um, sun shades on them. So what happens is in the wintertime with azimuth of the sun low, it brings light and heat into the building.
Sure, right.
And in the summer, these shades that extend out about 28 inches off the top of the, and they're open bars, they actually shade almost 90% of the window in the summer, so that heat gain then is reduced. These are also, um, um, Energy Star window systems. The last job we did has triple pane, but the money wasn't really ready for triple pane, but these are really very highly rated. There are also, all the windows are wood windows, which has a very good U-value, but it's exterior clad in, uh, in metal.
Okay.
So they're, they're maintenance-free.
What's the heating system that they've spec'd?
I think we have...
Is it geothermal?
No, no geothermal. That site wouldn't really let, it was a closed one, but we just can't dig a lot in the ground there.
Sure, I understand.
We have, um, VF, VFRs, I, my engineers know that better, but it's a, it's a highly efficient gas firing system using natural gas and heat pumps. It's primarily a heat pump system backed up by, uh, a heating element.
Great. Well, you know, I like the, um, I like the project as a whole, and I certainly want to see it, um, take the next steps, so I just, I was curious about that, because I can't see in this day and age, building anything that didn't at least try to achieve a certain level of, of LEED status.
All the lighting is LED inside, too. It's no longer any incandescent or CFLs. It's all LED lighting, even though they, these might be, they, a lot of, we have some skylights that look just like these ones.
Yeah, I can imagine.
The interior, uh, with natural sunlight. In fact, you can walk through this building on a moonlit night without any lights on, too. It's really cool.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions first on the, to clarify some of the information that you provided us on, um, application and on the renderings. The address for the property on the application and on the renderings is 50 South Street, and the assessor's map is 33127. That map and po, and block is actually, in the assessor's online database, is really 62 South Street. Now, whoever, I, your rendering is 50 South Street, the application is 50 South Street. Mr. Gregory, in his request for a certified abutter's list, uses 62 South Street, and Mr. Fliss responded with 62 South Street. So I'm assuming that the correct address for this is 62 South Street for this particular parcel that we're talking about.
No, it's the architect, not 62.
Okay. So now, Mr. Fliss provided Mr. Gregory with an abutter's list to parcel 33127, which is 2.3 acres. When you go to the development impact statement, page five, item two, someone who filled this out, I'm assuming, was it the town or was it you?
Me.
Okay. You put down 198,463 square feet, or 4.5 acres. So now we have a discrepancy between the amount of the total project area. In order to come up with your... In order to come up with your 4.5 acres, you have to include three other parcels. 33127, which is the 2.3, 33126, which is the .71, and 33128, which is 1.5. Those three add up to four and a half acres. Now, when I see that, and I see what the addition is, what I'm thinking is that, the question is, did we advertise this correctly? Are we missing some parcels that should have been in the newspaper ad in terms of what parcels are involved? So are we just in 33127, and is this just an oversight, or?
It is all the same property owned by the town of Walpole, which is, all three of those parcels are owned by the town of Walpole and constitute the site.
Okay, but for this particular site, you're not working in these other parcels?
No.
Okay. So you're not doing any work, as we look at these renderings, you're not doing any work in 33128 and 33126?
I'll have to go back to the existing conditions plan. But because they're all owned by the town of Walpole.
Yeah, this may be more of a question for town administration because when you look at some of your other renderings on these sheets, like page C2, C-2, C-3, and C-4, there are indications that you may be in those other parcels. And the other fourth parcel that I'm kind of concerned about is 33-120, which is the former railroad right-of-way, which we own, which is 8.62 acres. And those sheets that I just mentioned indicate work being done there by, by others.
By others.
By others.
Next.
But I'm wondering, that appears to be definitely a parcel that should have been in the advertising. Now, whether or not we captured all the, town administration captured all the correct abudders, abudders, I don't know. I'm assuming that.
Work in the right-of-way isn't part of what the presentation that we're making to you tonight. It was specifically excluded, the railroad right-of-way. It, it shows not in contract as part of what we're permitting in front of you tonight.
Yeah, that's for the walking trail, right, later on?
And that's, yeah, and.
Yeah, that's for later.
And so parts of the patio and the stage, which I understand. Yeah, there's no construction within the railroad right-of-way as part of what we're permitting with you. It's intended that maybe when funds are available in the future, those will be pursued, but that's part of the narrative.
Okay, so you're just adding that in for just, for general discussion?
Yeah.
So we can be very confident that what you're giving us is basically in 33127 and not anywhere else?
Right, because the, the other parcel, which is the building, the long building against South Street, is fully encompassed by the police station project.
That, that's correct. I have it on existing conditions. 33126 looks like it's where the proposed police station is. It's beside closer to Gleason Court.
Right.
Okay.
So everything would be on the 33127. And I would also think as far as the address question, I know there was a little bit of discussion about that between Kate and the town engineer. And I would think that for advertising purposes, any reasonable person could infer what parcels and what site was in fact being referenced. So I don't think that it would be to anybody's, you know, detriment or anything like that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're covered on all these bases. Okay, on the cover letter, you're asking for an exemption, is it you are asking for the exemption of a filing fee? And Mr. Chairman, I think we have to vote that separately then after the public hearing is completed. But we do have to vote that, I believe.
What is that?
The exemption on the filing fee. The bylaws require the applicant to give us that in writing, and it requires us to give him a response in writing. So I would think a motion and a vote would cover that.
Yeah, we should probably do it even before.
As long as we do it, okay.
Are we going to let the town away with the pen and fee?
Well, $3,529 is what I calculate. Do you think they have it?
Do you have it, Bill?
I think they have it.
Oh, I know they have it.
It's, my money is, your, my money is my money, and your money is my money.
Joe, they'd be more than happy to write it, but then they take their 10% of the cost, it's 350 bucks, right?
This is my office doing, yeah, right.
Yeah, so you'd be more than happy to do that. I'll do it for 10% right now. I'll give you cash.
We do charge 10% on that kind of thing. This is my office doing belt and suspenders. We couldn't find a clear statement anywhere that said we were, we did not need to file a fee, so we asked for it, just.
Yeah, the statement.
An excess of caution.
The statement that you provided is not a statement that I would have used. You basically said you want to take it from one pocket and put it into another's, another pocket, only because it's the same wallet. I would have been a little more general, and I think I may do that in the motion so that it is a.
Thank you.
More specific to our needs in a, in a response. But I wanted to talk about the development impact statement on page five. Also, page 13 of the project narrative, and Christian White's memo dated March 3rd, that she used for the police station that you are using for this.
Yes, sir.
And this, I guess, pertains to the rear setback.
Yes.
And I probably should just go over that so everybody knows what I'm talking about. And I guess it says, "The proposed building is depicted to be five plus or minus off of the, five feet off of the rear property line. While zoning requirements, requires a setback of 25 feet, subject to footnote seven, we note the following. Zoning table 6B1 footnote number seven indicates that no setback offset is required where the property abuts a railroad right-of-way. The previous use of the area was the railroad. The town has taken possession of this area. However, it is, is our belief that the exception for offset still applies." Well, that's a very clever way of putting it, but I don't think you needed that. I don't want a bad precedent set here, and that's why I bring this up. And right-of-way is abandoned, and I think the bylaw pertains to current, a current right-of-way, something that's being used now. However, I don't think you need it because the right-of-way is 90 feet wide. So you've got plenty of room there to use, that you meet the requirement because we own the land.
Right.
So I, for the record, I don't want to use what you supplied as a rationale at this time because I don't want somebody coming in and saying, I haven't abandoned right-of-way on, you know, that I want to do something with, and you let the senior center use it, and I'm going to use it, too. Now, whether they can do that, I don't know, but I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen.
So, so I do a lot of zoning and I work reviewing for towns. And we, we had discuss, discussion, I don't remember if you remember, but we had this, almost this exact discussion with the police station, with the outbuilding. If we have a pre-existing non-conforming condition that is closer than what's allowed under zoning, and we build something that is not conforming but less non-conforming further away, that's a grandfathering. So again, I'm, I'm using multiple belt and suspenders terminologies, if you would.
Right.
To find one that fits the bill.
Right. I just don't want somebody else using it.
If you want to disregard that, that's no problem.
And it's interesting, I like the fact that you are involved in zoning because what I would have done, and if I had thought about it earlier, is that I would have probably, knowing that we were going to do this, that probably this area should have been rezoned anyhow. We should be looking for some type of, and I don't know if you know about it, or whether it one exists, some type of municipal zoning that could be involved here. As I look down the street, I see a lot of single-family homes that are in an LM zone. And that ought to be changed as well, so that the use matches the zone. Now we have a, two properties of a, of a police department and a, and a senior center that are in an LM zone. And an LM zone doesn't really, the description of an LM zone doesn't really fit that.
I don't disagree, but it isn't allowed use in the district.
Right, it is.
We crashed the party though, Joe. That was LM, we decided we want to put it there.
Yeah.
I want it back there, but that's, only me.
Okay.
Would have been cheaper.
On the development impact statement, on your unnumbered page six, item three, you're asking for a traffic impact assessment waiver. And I guess that, too, would be a second vote that we should take, Mr. Chairman.
We've never done it on other projects where they haven't submitted the traffic.
We just ignore it?
No, it usually gets discussed at the public hearing, and if the board agrees with what the applicant's proposed and doesn't think it's warranted for a certain project, then it's discussed and put out there.
So we don't want to respond to the request for a waiver, just, we can do that.
We can vote on it.
Yeah, you can vote on it if it's.
Just technically speaking, the way the zoning regulation reads is the planning board may require a traffic. It's not an integral part, nor is it required as part of the submission documents. It is a may require, it's a permissive. And I can't find where you're speaking because I was directed to make sure I did not ask for a waiver on that. If that's in there, I would respectfully like to remove it.
You're asking about your application, right, where it is in it?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's asking about his application.
Did I ask for that waiver on my application?
It says, "Traffic impact assessment parentheses waiver requested."
Where?
Page, unnumbered page six of the development impact statement.
I respectfully like to remove that request. How do you see that?
Perfect, no move required.
Okay. So you want us to do, we want to ask you then, where's your traffic impact assessment?
And I would respond that it is a permissive thing, and if the planning board so requires it, we will do it. But we believe we've addressed the matter sufficiently.
Okay, the question I'd have, since we're really killing this, is what was the occupancy before? And the first occupancy now, that's the way I look at it, as far as number of cars, that's all.
I don't know what the.
It was a business before, so we had X amount of cars in and out of there. So now it's going to be, so it's going to be equal, a little more, a little less. That's, that's, I'm just saying that, Bill, just.
I can't answer that. I don't know.
That's why one of the things is, when I look at something like this, it's pretty much going to be the same.
One of the things we do mention is the senior center is principally an off-peak user. They're not a nine-to-five like a business, therefore they don't compound the peak a lot of their activities. So the buses leave very early sometimes. So nine-to-five is not their modus operandi. Correct me if I'm wrong.
In fairness, is, this was occupied before, so there was.
Yes.
Fair amount of traffic.
By some kind of businesses.
Yeah, a bunch of them, yeah.
Land, can I continue, Mr. Chairman? Landscaping Plan L1.0. I agree wholeheartedly about the removal of this, this scolod oak tree planting. You know, as I look at your planting list, and I look at the growth rate and the size of these trees, and the fact that they overhang the pavement, you know, these are pretty big trees.
I think we're going to switch that out to a pear, a flowering pear.
Okay.
Without pears on it.
What about the red maples that are there at the end of this parking lot as well? I think you have.
You think they look fabulous in the fall.
Well, they do, but they're pretty.
They don't overhang, they're pretty, you know, pretty high.
Your plan shows that they're overhanging, but they're also in a five-foot.
Oh, these two?
Yeah.
Those will be pears, too. I, I just made a note in my plan earlier in discussion. And those would be switched out to pears. Those are very vertical.
Right.
We use them.
And that's going to happen with these red maples as well?
The ones in, in the narrow island, yes.
Yes.
But not, I, I would like to keep the maples out at the entrance.
Where?
At the main, at the entrance that you see there, to see the two.
On South Street.
I don't have my glasses on right now, so I can't tell you what I'm looking at here.
Oh, that's the one, these two here, as the entrance, that secondary entrance?
Yeah, they're far as cokes. They would be placed in a way that they're spread and they're, they're also high so that you can see by them. We don't have any low planting there. The islands will be switching to, to the pears.
Okay. Those islands are kind of, can, you know, you don't get much water in there either, and.
That's what's good about the pears.
All right, as long as.
They live in really nasty environments.
All right, so was this landscaping plan reviewed by our DPW superintendent, Spox, at all?
I don't know, but we gave you multiple sets of plans, and I'm pretty sure they're on the distribution list.
I don't think so.
They came to the design review meeting.
Sign review, okay.
Let's put it this way, Joe. This is administration's project, so if they didn't show up, they're going to hear about it from somebody. Right? And they do have, I believe they have axes on fire trucks? Oh, I know they do.
Well, I could see some of this stuff coming down once it gets pretty big, if that is the case. You know, this, this planting is quite extensive. Quite expensive, too. And along with the police station, this is where it's going to turn into a regular Arnold arboretum over there. Is that, that's within budget?
It is so far.
Okay.
We're going to find out real soon.
It's always within budget till you bid it.
Actually, it's pretty small stuff, most of it. The trees are what could be a little bit expensive. And the patio, some of the areas, we're using it for screening, too.
And you've got 400 combination perennials and plant and shrub the trees and. On the grass, the lawn. I don't own a lawn. I haven't had a lawn in 35 years, so a lawn is a pet peeve of mine somewhat. We all got in the mail in the town of Walpole, this little thing from the sewer and water department telling us that we are under a mandatory demand management water ban from May 1st to October the 2nd. So I'm looking at your grass seed list, and when I see Kentucky bluegrass, that's a water user.
Yep.
So. And I also see.
Kentucky bluegrass is 10%. So what the Kentucky bluegrass, number one, while I am a landscape architect, I am not this project's landscape architect. That's a different gentleman, but I can address this.
Okay.
10% just means we're going to have an ice green lawn in the spring, then the Kentucky bluegrass is going to go dormant. The majority of what we've got is the fescues, both the chewings and the creeping and the rye grass are all very drought tolerant grasses.
All right, and that, and that's going to be drought tolerant considering you almost got a third of an acre of grass in there?
Yeah, so, and the landscape plan's going to rise on the downhill side. As I had mentioned, he's got a different, got a different graphic because I've got a one and a half to one to a three-to-one slope between us and the river, so the civvles do. And so I told them, you can't put a lawn there. We can't maintain it. We don't want to maintain it. So that's where we're putting a, a roger control fabric that's a jutinetic that biodegrades in two years. And it's going to have the Mass Highway slope. And it's going to have the Mass Highway slope mix that I had mentioned before. It's deep-rooted, essentially weeds. We don't want the town to cut it, but you can just keep the trees down if that's what you want. I don't think conservation really wants it.
And the seeding that you've selected is better than the zoya grass, which is, is more, which is probably the most drought resistant and most weed resistant?
Yeah, but the zoya is not, is not really for our zone, whereas these are indigenous Massachusetts species. So not only does it give us the benefit of stabilization by more than one species, it's habitat enhancing.
Well, they got two neighbors with zoya grass, so it seems to be surviving for many years.
Right, but this is, this is specific for slopes, and the Conservation Commission kind of likes the fact that it has the seed pods in the fall for the birds, etc.
The parking lot?
Sure.
This set of plans that I have, which was the first set of plans, I guess you submitted, shows fifty-seven parking spaces. The one that you just submitted tonight, right, this set of plans on the bottom right here, it says fifty-four parking spaces, okay?
Is that the landscape plan I just gave?
And you said earlier in your presentation that the count is fifty-two parking spaces, and that's what my count is.
Yeah, the correct number is shown on C four where we have hexagons with the number of spaces in each row.
Okay, but you'll take care of the inconsistency that are on these plans so that they all reflect fifty-two spaces, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and there are forty-two public spots, okay? And for handicap, and then this six spots at the top of the plan ordering the police department, are they the ones that are assigned for council on aging vehicles?
That's really an operational thing. That's further than the design, but that's the intent, that those are, those are people working there. Also the meals and meals would come in, that loading area.
So you're saying that if we have forty-two public spaces, forty-two public spaces will be sufficient until the seventy? Well, since one report it says seventy-two, and another report it says seventy-nine spaces, that what's called, I call it the wooden current offset spaces. Until they come on board, we're going to operate with forty-two spaces.
But part of the plan, and we do mention it in the project narrative, is that long stretch that goes next to the kitchen. It's semi-loading?
Yes, I see that.
But they, they can stack the vans in there overnight because when they park the vans, the senior center is closed. They can also use that for snow storage. If they're plowing those six spaces, they can stack the vans temporarily there. So that's why John said it's kind of an operational, we're giving them the options.
Why didn't you go with angled parking, which my understanding is are more efficient, gets more spaces?
It really isn't.
Much less.
Much less?
Much less, yeah. Especially, this is a particularly tight site. Just to give you a little background, we've done about maybe twenty-five of these buildings. We've done some that are twenty thousand plus square feet with fifty-four spaces of parking, which works out really well. And when they have major events, they actually park off-site.
Okay.
But angled parking, this parking lot's been laid out about thirty different ways, and this is the best that we could come up with for the maximum spaces.
Okay, now, when you did lay it out, you know, my first glance at this wasn't as receptive as it is now, but you have like two lanes, it looks like you, can you run four cars abreast on these two lanes going out, exiting simultaneously?
The lanes are twenty-five feet wide.
Right.
Which is, you need, if you're driving a big pickup truck or, in the old days, a Cadillac Eldorado, you need a full twenty-four feet to back completely up out of your space and move forward unless you're driving a smaller car. So even though the lanes are wide enough for a two-way road, they're intended to be a single direction.
Okay, and you're coming in on the sheer driveway with the police department? You don't see a problem with these six spaces exiting in a more, what more, without coming down out your way, but going out straight because that's the more convenient way for them to do that? You want them to exit this way where the lines?
Everybody exits via the police station driveway. That's how we get out of the site.
Including these six spaces, they're going to.
Yeah, and including the police station, public visitors.
And you're going to have signage there to say that this is the exit to go out and the only exit, not this, not this other exit that allows people to come in that way?
The entry for South Street is narrower purposely, but we've coordinated with, with the fire department. And as the chairman mentioned, the radius pulls you right past it. You'd have to go out of your way and bump the curb to incorrectly exit on the southerly entrance into the site. And we will have do not enter signs.
Okay.
And that's, that's on the plan. Actually, that's what is referred to. I think it says R six two A.
Okay, and on page fifteen of the project narrative, there's a sentence there that says, "Funds for the construction will be presented to town meeting in the spring of two thousand and seventeen." I'm not sure what that means. The two thousand and seventeen warrant is out. I don't see any requests for, I think, I thought we did this already. What, is that pertaining to something else?
There's no funding request in this spring town meeting.
Okay, so ignore that.
That's a typo.
Oh, it's a long typo. It's a whole sentence. All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyway, no one has anything else? We'll take care of the two things, make a motion, grant a waiver for the traffic.
Second.
There's a second, further discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. And as far as the fee, I think the fee should be fifty grand, and we just turn it over. So at least we got fifty in the pound farm. What do you think, Joe? We did our job.
Will Mr. Gregory participate in that?
Well, it's going to come to us. He's going to get his kick of ten, sad.
Go for it.
Make a motion to waive the fee, which only makes sense.
Second.
Second, oh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, all right. Anybody see any other issues or the conditions? Let's go ahead with all, without the.
I would suggest that the board put a few conditions, maybe start out with, prior to endorsement of the MyLars, that the hydrant shall be moved as per Walpole Fire Department's request.
Why don't we just step on this? Why don't we just say that everything here is answered and on the plans or has been?
Yeah, that's fine. And do you want to give, yeah.
Or a letter or?
Yeah, because that's what I have here, just Maggie, that.
Everything in here, yeah, does the conditions have met here? You want to do it like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, what was the other one? Oh.
The trees.
And they're going to train, yeah, change the trees.
Yeah.
True, yeah, okay.
And if that's all done, and then, and that needs to be done before they submit my.
Well, I guess we'll become down, per Maggie, town engineers and also.
Walpole Fire Department.
Yeah, he takes care of the trees, too.
Perfect.
We also have the criteria of the Conservation Commission that we need to revise the plans.
We don't care about that.
Okay.
Well, you're going to have to revise that and give us the set and incorporate it all.
I didn't know if you just wanted to button it all up, because we got to do it anyway.
We'll button it anyway. My understanding, we're not going to have to go to Congress, this is going to be an extension of the previous one, but you had to go in front of them, huh?
They closed the public hearing, but subject to a few modifications.
Then when we started this whole project, it was be, we're just going to take over, or was there the COVIDian or Kendall was doing? What, you couldn't do their orders or conditions and just continue?
We want to mix and match with the responsible parties, and the town wants to keep the responsible parties as responsible parties. They're on the hook if we find any additional bad stuff.
Make a motion for Liz to do it all? Okay, if everybody's all set, make a motion to approve, we'll close it, I have to leave it open. Because if you close it, then they can't get out of this. Make a motion to approve, and the conditions will be set forth by Liz for everything within the engineering and the fire department's comments, and you were all set, right?
Trees, with the trees.
Yeah, the trees are.
Yeah, that's part of the fire department.
Okay.
Second.
And there was a second. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained.
Thank you very much.
And make a motion to close?
Okay.
Close, okay. There was a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, yes.
Jack, I'll, I'll, I'll read that letter on, on Union Village.
Yeah, he needs to.
Oh, you got, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot we got the one more, yeah.
I thought you were close.
Yeah, no, 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 I was close on that, yeah, go ahead, Joe.
The hour been after seven thirty, I am going to read a following letter received by the applicant. Applicant's title and approval date, twenty-eight, Union Square Village. Dear Mr. Chairman, it has been brought to my attention that the public hearing scheduled for tonight, April the twentieth, with the planning board, will not have the benefit of the presence of members of the board in attendance. Given the nature of this application, it is important that all the members of the board be in attendance during the public hearing in order to record a vote in this matter. Therefore, please accept this letter as a formal request to continue without testimony the public hearing scheduled for the proposed project entitled Union Square Village until June the fifteenth, two oh seventeen, at seven thirty. In addition, it is requested at this time that the board to issue, to issue a decision be extended until June the thirtieth, two seventeen. In the interim, should there be any revisions to the plan, revised plans will be submitted for review two weeks prior to the date of rescheduling the hearing. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Wall Street Development Corp., Louis Petose, President. A motion to continue this hearing without testimony, testimony until June the fifteenth at seven thirty, five P M. Second?
Second.
And accept an extension up until, including, until June the thirtieth.
Second.
Okay, second.
Want to vote both of them?
Vote both.
All in favor?
All in favor, yeah.
Aye.
Aye. I'm not here, so I'm only just put three zeros there.
Three, yeah.
I'm not staying, I'm just not participating. Okay, that's, that was the last thing in the night, so make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.